Good afternoon and welcome to the Appeals Court. My name is Justice Peter Sacks. To my right is Justice Sabita Singh. Joining us via Zoom is Justice Maureen Walsh. We'll be your panel for the one case being argued this afternoon. Just to make sure all parties are aware, each side will have 15 minutes. As the appellees know, each of the appellees will have 15 minutes. And there's no rebuttal time. We have read your briefs. We're familiar with your arguments. And we know the factual background of the case, so we would urge you just to get right to the key parts of your argument right away. So with that, I will call the case number 22P1130, Dwayne Galby versus Wayland Zoning Board of Appeals and Another. And Mr. Ramadu?
Yes, come up to the podium, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor, for the opportunity to be here. I have appealed this land court decision because I want to be represented by professional counsel in a trial in land court. And so I don't have the same confidence in Mr. Galby's ability to defend my rights in land court as perhaps he does. So that's why I've appealed this decision. And I believe the decision is wrong because I believe my intervention is timely. I intervene within a couple of weeks of moving into the property that I purchased right next to the place where the cell tower will be built.
You mentioned you wanted to be represented by professional counsel. Will you have professional counsel?
If the case, if I proceed to land court, yes, I will have professional counsel to protect my rights against the cell tower construction.
One of the things that we said in the first decision in this case, which you may be familiar with, when Ms. Martin tried to intervene previously, is that if a party is contending that representation or that the existing parties aren't represented by counsel and therefore won't adequately represent the potential intervenor's interest, that one has to be specific about how the existing party, in this case, Mr. Galby, would not represent your interest. So as we said in the prior decision, it's not enough just to say, well, we want someone, we want to be represented by a lawyer. You have to be specific. So I'm wondering if you can be more specific than...
Yeah. So in that time, since the previous intervener tried to intervene, with the case has progressed quite a lot. And in particular, we had a trial. And in my opinion, the trial showed that Mr. Galby was terrible. So based on this performance, I believe I will not be having adequate representation from Mr. Galby. And so that's why I'm intervening to, in order to protect my rights, with professional counsel in land court.
Okay. So did I understand your argument? And we agree that at the time that you purchased your land and your property, your home...
Yes.
This issue had already been addressed with the zoning board, correct?
Exactly. To be specific, I purchased in April 2022, and I think the issue was in 2019.
So...
The zoning board decision, yeah.
And I understand that your argument is timeliness as to intervention as soon as you moved into the neighborhood, right?
Correct. Correct, yes.
Versus filing of the suit. So because at that point in time, you weren't even in that neighborhood, it really didn't affect you, right?
Can you repeat the last part, please?
So you weren't affected back when the lawsuit in the zoning board made its decision to allow the variance because it wasn't for years until you moved into this neighborhood and carried...
I was, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
And so on the issue of legal representation...
Yep.
You're kind of, and I understand why, but you're saying, you know, in a rear-view mirror, right?
Yeah.
That Mr. Galby didn't do a great job at trial.
Yeah.
Is your, your, had I, had I been allowed to intervene and had a professional counsel been able to assist, the outcome would have been more favorable or favorable.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I think you wouldn't be here, right, if you, if Mr. Galby, in your opinion, did a terrific job in a trial? I mean, it's the benefit of hindsight, but was there anything in particular that you wanted to bring up? It's your opportunity now, sir, either as far as timeliness, because it's not about timeliness, like when you moved into the neighborhood, like you didn't drag your heels.
Yeah.
We're looking at something where this had begun in 2019.
Mm-hmm.
And this train was really far down the track, not because you delayed anything, but because it had its own track.
Yeah.
So is there anything that you want to say about that particular issue or about even more specificity about, with all due respect to Mr. Galby, why you think his representation of your interests was inadequate?
Yeah, totally agree. So concerning your first point, I'm intervening because this is my only chance to oppose the construction of this cell tower basically in my backyard. As in a general law, 40A allows for a 20-day window for intervention, and that's way, we are well beyond that 20-day window. So by intervention in this case is my only chance to oppose the construction of that tower. Otherwise, I have no recourse apart from intervening here. And in terms of your second point about my comments concerning professional legal representation, I, I, I believe first, it's my right for professional legal representation, but I, I, I did follow the trial in land court. I read the documents on the docket. And truly, it was, it was not how a professional lawyer would be conducting this case. I've, myself have met with several professional lawyers before coming here today, and they all said that if I were to hire them, it would be conducted much more different and would, I would have a much better chance in a case in land court.
So aside from the issue of...
Yep.
Whether someone else would do a better job or a poorer job...
Yep.
...in representation, what about the actual, the actual things that are being argued or presented? Do you feel that you have interests that might be unique to you, separate from Mr. Galby? And so he wouldn't have the same, he wouldn't have the same motivation to bring up your issues?
Great question. Yeah, that's something I really want to emphasize also. My interests are much, I believe, are much stronger than Mr. Galby's because this cell tower will be about 100 feet from my land. And so number one, there's a lot of property devaluation that can happen with a cell tower right next to my land. But second is, as we well described in the brief, a cell tower can cause adverse health effects. And I have two young kids, one-year-old and two-year-old, and if that cell tower is built right next to my land, I will have no choice but to move out. I'm not going to be exposing my kids to the nefarious effects of a cell tower there. So I have very strong interest in this, and I want to protect my rights in opposing the construction of this cell tower right next to my property.
So, so you're asserting that you have standing to challenge the tower or that you would be hurt by it?
Yeah.
Not only because of its effects on the view, which I think is the only basis for standing that survived by the time of trial for Mr. Galby?
Yeah.
But you'd also be asserting the grounds of effect on property values and on health?
Yeah.
So would that, my question is, would that complicate? Well, number one, do you envision there being another trial if you were allowed to intervene?
I can't predict, but I hope there will be another trial where I'll have a fair chance at defending my rights. So if I'm allowed to intervene, I'll let the land court follow its due course, but I imagine there would be a trial.
If there were to be another trial, then would you want to send discovery requests to Selco or Verizon to develop the basis for your arguments about the effect on view or the effects on property values or the effects on health?
I would, but these discoveries, I figure, pretty straightforward. I can hire an appraiser to get the difference in property values before and after the cell tower. And in terms of the effect of health, these are published widely in the literature, in the scientific literature. So I'm pretty confident in the, in the discovery if we were to have that at trial.
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, would it prolong the proceeding for you to do whatever discovery you might need of Verizon and for Verizon perhaps in turn to do discovery with you and with the other potential intervener to determine whether you really will suffer these types of effects?
Great question. In terms of prolonging the proceeding, I, I really can't comment. I just, my only comment is that I want my right to be defended and, and, however long it takes, I would welcome that time. So if it delays the proceeding, that's perhaps, not really my, my main focus here. My focus is, is that my right be defended, and that's why I'm intervening.
So can I just ask a follow-up question? And you agree with me that without Mr. Galby, you really don't have a train to kind of hitch your, your argument in too, right? You're, you're, you're without a remedy? Do you agree with, you, you need to join somebody who is properly before the court because...
Yeah.
Right?
Totally agree. And again, here, I think in Verizon's brief, they said that the knowledge of my, of my, of the zoning board decision should be attributed to the predecessors of the title of my property. And, and that's a fair argument, but it's not supported by case law. Also, my, the person I bought the house from, he has no incentive to give me that information. So it's, it's like...
And you're, you're, you're doing a great job, I have to tell you, sir, because you're absolutely, that's, that's where I was going to. I mean, you're asking us to allow you at a later time...
Yep.
...to intervene on a case that's pretty far down the track, right?
Yeah.
Really far down the track.
Yeah.
But the argument that you say differentiates Galby from you is not just the view. Yours is much more affected, but it's the health and the value of your property.
Yeah.
You bought the property years and years after the variance was granted, right?
Yes.
So it, wouldn't it be fair to assume that when you bought the property, since this was a public hearing and this was something that, you know, notice was provided, I'm not saying, suggesting that you particularly knew, but that there was notice out there that the property that you were buying...
Yep.
...a variance was granted that was going to, in essence, put, you know, for lack of a better word, a really ugly cellphone and potentially hazardous, in your opinion, cellphone tower in your backyard?
That's a great point, but again, when I bought the property, I didn't know about this variance. As I mentioned, the seller has no incentive to, to tell it to me unless I specifically asked, will there be a cellphone tower in this R20 residential zone, which again would be, I think nobody ever asked this because you are moving into a highly, very well-off residential property, like no one will ever suspect, oh, yes, the zoning board issued a variance for a cellphone. So I, I didn't ask, and also the seller had no incentive to share that. So I, I didn't know, but, but I became aware of it when I moved in.
All right. You have a minute left. I don't see any further questions. Is there anything you want to say in conclusion?
No, I, I just want to emphasize that I'm here to defend my rights and to have a proper, professional representation in a trial at land court. So that's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And we're, we'll hear from Mr. Galby next. I hope I've been pronouncing that correctly. Thank you.
My name is Dwayne Galby, and I represent myself pro se in this case. In my brief, I argued against the intervener's motion purely on practical terms. I don't think I need help, and quite frankly, I don't want help. The case has been going on for four years, and I don't want to disturb the case because I don't want it to go on any longer. So, you know, quite frankly, I, and the other problem with having more people in the case is it makes it more complicated if I want to settle. You know, I, I'd like to settle this case if possible. I have some things I like to do if possible to settle. I have no idea if the other parties would want the same conditions, and I don't want to have to, frankly, it would be best if I didn't have to deal with that. So from my perspective, you know, having another intervener in the case at this point just complicates the case, introduces people that have different needs and different desires than I do, and makes it more difficult for me to go forward. So for those reasons, I oppose the intervention. However, as I mentioned in my brief, I don't really see any legal reason to oppose the intervention. And quite frankly, I would rather not have my name associated with a decision denying intervention in this case. If intervention in this case is denied, it basically out there denies intervention in pretty much every single land court case, right? Verizon argued that if, you know, the notice is attributed to the predecessor, therefore everyone gets notice. Verizon argued that in the Styler case, that the only way to intervene is if you don't have standing at the beginning of the case, you don't have standing at the end of the case. And in Galby versus Selco, one argued if you don't intervene early, you can't intervene late. If you combine all those three combinations, you can't intervene in any land court case, I believe, unless you move to, move to start the case at the beginning. I think looking at Styler is, is very instructive because Styler says if you don't have standing at the beginning of the case, or if you do have standing at the beginning of the case, you don't lose standing if you leave the case. I mean, Verizon is obviously a very skilled lawyer. He was able to convince the judge that means if you don't have standing at the, you can't, if you don't have standing when the case starts, you can't have standing later. I'm not saying basically if A implies B, B implies A, which is basically fundamentally logically incorrect. If that's such a logic, if that type of logic held, you know, one would say, well, if I win this case, I'll eat a big piece of apple pie. If that logic held, it would say, if I ate a big piece of apple pie, I will win this case. By the way, I did eat a big piece of apple pie today. Verizon also tries to argue based on Cochrane that permissive intervention, Cochrane, that it is, that there are, that the intervention is highly prejudicial to them. But it's important to realize that is a permissive intervention case, not an intervention by And the standards for those two cases are vastly different. In a permissive intervention case, the court is able to consider the impact of intervention based on the whole case. In an intervention by right case, as this case is, the court only considers the prejudice due to the delay and seeking intervention. And I think we'll all agree that Mr. Ramadu moved very quickly to intervene, so therefore that delay would be very small, and therefore the resulting prejudice must be very small.
Don't we also consider not only the delay between the time the potential intervener learned of the dispute or learned of his or her, its, or however, ability to intervene, but also the stage to which the proceedings have progressed before intervention is sought?
I don't, I would beg to differ, Your Honor, and I think there's very good case law in that case. I think if you look at McDonald versus Quark or Colesby versus Department of Social Service, in McDonald versus Quark, the intervention was granted after the decision was rendered. In Colesby versus the Department of Social Services, it was delivered just before the case went to trial. So I think there's sufficient case law to indicate, no, that's really not a concern in an intervention by right. In a pervasive intervention, it's very different. Therefore, the judge can look at the whole gamut of the situation.
So what happened in those, well, it may not show in the appellate decision, but what do you envision happening here if the potential interveners were allowed to intervene? Would there be a new trial? I mean, you've already been through a trial, as I understand it, and it's under advisement with the judge.
Yeah, they moved to intervene roughly two years ago, I do believe. I think in the original Galby versus Selco intervention case, the judge ruled that it was too late to intervene, and quite frankly, we're three years later, four years later, and the case still hasn't finished. So I think the, and once again, I think it's, that's the wrong standard for intervention, but I didn't answer your question, I apologize. I think, I don't know, you know, quite frankly, and that's, I don't think that's relevant to this intervention case, you know?
So if a case has gone to trial, just a hypothetical case, has gone to trial, it's under advisement, and then someone moves into the neighborhood and learns that this case is pending, and the very next day moves to intervene, there was certainly no delay between the time they learned of the case and the time they moved to intervene. But is a court not able to consider the prejudice that would result if intervention was allowed and the parties had to go back to square one?
So I think McDonald versus Quark kind of says no. That basically the intervention's prejudice is based on the delay and based on the other conditions. So it's not a prejudice case there. One might argue that there was sufficient representation. You know, I think I'm a pretty good lawyer. I'm not a lawyer, but frankly, I take that back. I'm pro se, this is the first time I've ever done a case, but I've been doing it for four years. I'm confident I got pretty good. You know, I admit, trials are tough. I thought briefs were tough, but trials are really, really tough. And as I admitted in my brief, it didn't go well. There was stuff I would have liked to introduce I wasn't able to introduce. But I personally believe I did good enough and the, you know, my standing is good. You know, I think it's, yeah, I don't want to argue that case. I don't think it makes sense to argue that case, but, you know, I think I did good enough. It's a very, very strong case, I do believe. I can understand if Mr. Ramadu doesn't believe I did a great job, but I have confidence in what I did.
What's your position on whether you adequately represented the interests of the potential interveners? I think I know, but I just want to pin it down.
I, I don't care to represent his interests, quite frankly. And I, you know, as I don't want him there because I don't want to have to deal with that.
Right.
So did I represent his interests? No, because quite frankly, I don't care to represent his interests. I'll be frank about that.
Well, let me put it this way. Have they shown that you have not adequately represented their interests? Whether you in your own mind care about it or not, have they shown that your representation is inadequate? I mean, you're opposing the variance, you're opposing the construction of the tower.
I think it's a, it's a difficult question. I think, would you want to be represented in a trial by attorney that had never done a trial before on something that has a big effect on your, your home? And I think, I think you can answer that question. And, you know, I think that's what you all have to consider. Given that question, is that a tough question for you to answer?
You're getting some experience answering questions or perhaps not answering them. Seeing no further questions from the panel, is there anything you want to say in conclusion?
I would like to add one thing. I think there was a Galby-Selco case, which my name is attached to. I think, quite frankly, I think, you know, Verizon has argued that, hey, you know, a decision granting intervention in this case would be contrary to the Galby-Selco case because there was some indication in the Galby-Selco case that 40A17 kind of limits one's ability to intervene if you don't intervene in the first 20 days. I think there's really no case law other than Galby-Selco that tries to make that argument. And I think it's pretty clear from reading the statute 40A17, and I think even Idine versus the City of Newton in 1986 kind of established the reason for the statute is to allow someone to move forward and to know when they can start moving forward without having someone challenge the zoning decision. There is no indication in 40A that it's, it's a limit to intervention. And quite frankly, in 40A itself, it does acknowledge the fact that people can intervene. So I, you know, I think this case ends up being a little more important than any other case because I think there's some issues that were raised in, in the original Galby-Selco case, which seemed to be contrary to some other decisions you have made in the past. So I would hope you would take this opportunity to clarify some of those inconsistencies.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your argument, and we'll hear from Verizon now. Mr. Hamill?
Thank you, Your Honor, and may it please the court. My name is Adam Hamill, and I represent Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. Any person wishing to intervene in a pending civil matter must do so by making a timely application under Rule 24. And the First Circuit has held that, has called that timeliness requirement the sentinel that guards the gateway to intervention. It's essentially the price of admission, that you have to do, seek intervention in a timely manner. If it's, if the motion to intervene is not timely, the inquiry stops there, and the court shouldn't even or doesn't, not even need to look at the other two factors required under, under Rule 24A. And in this case, it is our position that the land court properly determined that the butters' motion to intervene was untimely. This court's review of the denial is based on abuse of discretion. And so the question for this court is not whether or not it would have reached a different result, but whether or not the land court's decision falls outside of the range of reasonable alternatives. And I think that that gets to the, the point that Mr. Galby was just making about, you know, other cases in which, you know, under the facts of those cases, the court determined that a intervention at a late stage was, was appropriate in those cases. But just because those cases came out with that, it doesn't necessarily mean that the land court in this case made a wrong decision or abused her discretion in doing so.
Can I interrupt for a moment, counsel?
Certainly, Your Honor.
I want to make sure I understand you. It seems to me you have two separate arguments, one on the basis of standing and then one on the basis of timeliness and the factors and the abuse of discretion standard. Am I correct in that?
Yeah, I think that they're, they're, they're separate, but in some ways related. And I think that, that, yeah, that the, and I know that the land court, you know, discussed them both somewhat in tandem, and I think that they're significant. But I think that the fact that, you know, that the butters who came late to the scene, they didn't have standing at the time that the case was instituted, that's sort of, you know, part of the factors that we consider in the totality of the circumstances. But that in and of itself is not related to the standings. What I'm talking about with regard to the, the timing of their motion to intervene, that relates...
No, no, I, yeah, I understand that argument, but I'm looking at your brief and looking at the arguments, and, you know, you're citing the Styler case, right?
That's right, the Styler case.
And, and so in this hypothetical, let's just say that the property changed hands 30 days after the variance was granted. So 20 days to appeal the decision of the zoning board, and Mr. Galby gets in the door and files suit, but then 10 days later, we have a new neighbor who's joined the neighborhood, right?
Right.
And so that individual, if I follow your logic, wouldn't have standing to intervene because he or she, in my example, it would be just a he, wasn't an aggrieved party. because he or she, in my example, it would be just a he, wasn't an aggrieved party at the time in which the zoning board made its decision. Is that true? Or the time of the claim?
So I think that with regard to the standing issue and the hypothetical you just gave, Your Honor, I think that the Styler case addresses that issue and talks about, I think it's Rule 25, that talks about the ability to to substitute parties. And that didn't happen in the Styler case. The new owner was not substituted as a party, and therefore, the plaintiff in that case, Mr. Styler, maintained that he was able to, you know, retain his his standing because it wasn't substituted. So I think that under the under the hypothetical that you just mentioned, that, you know, that there could be a substitution of parties and relate and the other question with regard to the timeliness, if that person, that new owner, came on the scene just 30 days after the case was was instituted, you know, well beyond or after the time period for, you know, bringing their own claim under the statute, but still, you know, at a very, very early stage in the in the case, I think that that's a situation where intervention would be appropriate. And because Rule 25 allows for the possibility of substitution of parties, I think that that standing issue could be addressed.
Well, the substitution of parties assumes that the previous owner has filed an appeal, correct?
Perhaps. I think that that.
Right. So, I mean, I'm looking at the logic of Styler, and only a person aggrieved may challenge a decision of the zoning board of appeals, right?
Yep.
And it's jurisdictional. And so you look at standing and look to see whether a land court has jurisdiction over the matter at the commencement of the suit. And so if, in this instance, the previous owner couldn't care less because he's selling the property and doesn't want to show his hand and explain and divulge that there's going to be a power in the backyard, I'm not sure that a substitution of party is an adequate remedy when the person didn't file suit. So I hear you on the timeliness. I'm not sure I agree with you on the standing jurisdictional issue. I don't think the case rises or falls on that, but.
Well, and Your Honor, I think that that I wouldn't necessarily disagree with you on that. And I think that while that is one of the factors that, you know, we raised at argument below, and it's one of the things that Judge Rubin mentioned in her decision, it's 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 not, I agree with you that the case doesn't rise or fall on that standing issue. The issue, the real issue is the timeliness issue, the fact that, you know, this case was, you know, well over two years into it. We had already, you know, almost finished discovery. The judge was ready to to schedule a trial. And so I think that the the timeliness issue, putting aside standing, I think the standing issue is sort of, it's an interesting other factor. But the timeliness piece, that's really what is critical here. And I think any way that you sort of slice it, the this was was untimely. And I think.
Well, actually, could you talk a little bit more about, is timeliness different under a as-of-right case versus a permissive case?
Yeah, you know, and that's a point that's been made in in the papers, and I don't see that distinction being made in the case law that I've I've read on this. I mean, when you look at both Section A and Section B, they both start out by saying that, you know, whether you know, in Section A, you shall, in Section B, you may, they both start out with, you know, that the application has to be timely. And I don't see anything in the case law that says that there's a different definition for what the word timely means for a Section A case and a Section B case. But, you know, in even looking beyond that, you know, in terms of, you know, one of the reasons why, you know, the other side is talking about the what they claim is sort of the distinction there is this idea of whether or not we're measuring, you know, prejudice based upon the prejudice of the the parties in general, just having someone join the case at a late stage versus additional sort of unique prejudice caused by the specific delay that they engaged in. And I think that that's covered in the factors that are in the first Galby decision from this court, especially factor four, that talks about considering all of the circumstances in the case, and those circumstances include, you know, the stage at which the litigation is in and what it would mean for all of the parties involved to have someone new join the case, you know, two years in.
What would it mean here? If we were to allow intervention, what would happen back in the land court?
Well, I think that especially given, you know, well, it's interesting. I mean, in the initial motion to intervene, the interveners, my understanding was that they were going to adopt Mr. Galby's pleadings, and I think that they had said in their motion that they were not going to ask for any additional discovery. What we hear even just today is that there's, you know, going to be an allegation of different types of of harm that's caused to them, you know, an issue of diminution of property values, which would include additional discovery with regard to if he's going to get an appraiser and have, you know, an expert on that, there would be some discovery involved in that with regard to the alleged health issues. First of all, I think that under TCA, those things can't be raised anyway, but if that's going to be raised, it'd be discovery to be done that. So there'll be additional discovery, which would cause delays. He's indicated that he wants to have a whole new trial. You know, we had a two-day trial, you know, two or a year ago, more than a year ago on this case. So it would be, you know, an extreme amount of prejudice to sort of essentially redo discovery with a new plaintiff and basically have a redo of the trial that we've already done.
And have you looked into the law on what happens when the case, there's an appeal of a denial of a motion for intervention as of right, and the case proceeds merrily along in the trial court during the penance of the appeal? If the denial gets overturned, what happens? Is the trial court supposed to go back to the point at which the motion was denied and grant intervention and then let everyone reset to that point? Or does the intervenor take the case as the intervenor finds it when intervention is allowed ultimately?
Yeah, and that it's not something that I've seen in the cases that I've looked at, but I will, you know, be honest with you, Your Honor, I didn't specifically research that specific issue, but I did read a lot of intervention cases, and I did not come across any law as to sort of what happens, you know, what position the the intervenor is put in. But I don't see at this point, you know, what would happen otherwise if it's if it's not that, because, you know, here we are at the at the point where, you know, the land court could issue its decision any day now. You know, we had, the briefing was done back in the summer. We had our argument in in September. And so, you know, if the if we were to just, you know, say, okay, the Butters can intervene, and I'm not quite sure what they would do then, they probably would file a motion for a new trial or something like that, because, you know, otherwise, in order to get additional evidence into the record, they would need to reopen the trial at the very least. So I think that it would involve, you know, significant, you know, delay and prejudice to to the sale carrier here.
So the the interveners in the trial court said they would be willing to adopt Mr. Galby's pleadings, which don't allege harm to health or property values, or if they ever did, I'm not sure. At least as of the time of trial, it had been narrowed down to view as the basis for standing.
That's correct. So the issues with regard to property value and health had been addressed on summary judgment, and the land court determined that those, you know, were issues that were not going to go forward to trial.
And would were they resolved on grounds that would apply equally to the interveners? Or does it depend on where Mr. Galby's property is versus where the intervenor's property?
I think the reason why the land court, you know, disposed of those issues on summary judgment related to the fact that Mr. Galby had not put forward any, you know, credible evidence to advance those claims. And so I think that I don't know what would happen if Mr. Ramadu were to, you know, put forward different, you know, if you have an expert report or put forward different affidavits or something like that. It just it was it was the determination of the land court that there wasn't, you know, sufficient evidence for, you know, her to move forward on those issues.
It seems like there's a little bit of a catch-22 here because or an internal contradiction. If the interveners are allowed to assert additional grounds for standing, then one could conclude that Mr. Galby does not adequately represent them. On the other hand, if they're asserting additional grounds for standing, then there's greater prejudice to Verizon, arguably, because there are new issues that have to be developed. Maybe, I suppose, the interveners would seek to reopen discovery, perhaps have a trial on health issues, property values. So you see the contradiction I'm pointing to?
And I think that that's exactly where the the discretion of the trial court comes in and weighing all the factors. There's a there's a there's one of the quotes here. It talks, one of the cases that cited in my brief talks about that that the further along the case goes, the more searching scrutiny that the court appropriately puts on on the the level of of prejudice. So I think that the court, the land court, you know, can exercise their discretion, you know, as we get closer, those factors get weighed differently. So, right, that there is some difference in in the prejudice, you know, the question is, I think, different at, you know, one month into the case versus, you know, two years into the case.
And the parties are, I think your brief asserts that we review the judge's decision for abuse of discretion. In the first Galby case, our court cited Mass Federation of Teachers, which says, I'm sorry, perhaps not Mass Federation, oh, it was the Fremont Investment and Loan case. Judge has discretion in determining whether an intervening party has demonstrated facts that entitle him or her to an intervention as of right. And so we reviewed the factual findings for clear error, but whether those facts are sufficient to meet the requirements for intervention is a question of law and is reviewed as such. And so that's from, I mean, we cited that case in 2022. It's quoting from Fremont Investment and Loan, which was a 2011 case. Is the standard still abuse of discretion?
I think it is, but I also think it's 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 important to note that, you know, that the court really, this court gives a lot of deference to trial court's decisions. And in the Bolden versus O'Connor case, this court said that it's rare for our appellate courts to reverse the decision of a of a Rule 24A2 motion under abuse of discretion standard. So I think that that there is a lot of, you know, you know, discretion that's given in deference given to the trial courts in these cases.
Seeing no further questions, I think we're all set. Thank you for your, thank you all for your arguments. Very well presented on all sides.
Thank you, Your Honor.
And we'll take the case under advisement. So with that, I'd like to thank our court officers and our clerk's office staff.